Good evening, welcome to the August 26th Planning Board meeting. And sitting here is Matt Martin. Bob Watts, Harry Luckertia.
And myself, Tilly Angelista.
Howard Snyder, our planner, and Andrea back there is taking minutes. I've got a motion for minutes of August 8th.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 8th, 2015.
Second? Motion and a second has been for August 8th. Any discussion?
Is it August 8th or is it August 3rd?
August 8th.
It's meant to be the 8th.
Was it a Monday meeting?
The 13th was the Monday meeting, wasn't it?
It was that special meeting we had in class about that meeting.
Was that a Monday night? Was it?
I think it was, yeah.
Okay, so if I can change my motion, if I may, I'll withdraw my motion to approve the minutes of August 8th and I'll make a new motion to approve the minutes of August 3rd, 2015.
I'll second that instead.
Great, good catch, Harry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you announce the vote by saying?
I have a motion for August 13th minutes. That was the Monday one, right?
That was the one where we moved from Wednesday to Thursday.
To Thursday, right? Yeah, this is, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 13th, 2015.
Second? A motion and a second for August 13th, approval of minutes. Discussion?
Just a point of clarification, I wasn't here, so do I vote on this motion or do I abstain?
You can abstain.
We'll let you.
Is this the one that has spelled Kaminsky?
Probably.
Okay, you got that one now? Oh, my glasses are falling apart. So you have that straight now. It's a C instead of a K.
Say it one more time so I can double check it.
C-O-M-I-S-K-Y.
K-E-Y?
K-Y, isn't it? It's with a C.
We'll double check this, this going.
Yeah.
I believe we picked that up.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ready to vote? All ready to vote?
Yes ma'am.
Motion to approve the minutes? Did you make them?
Aye.
Did you vote?
Aye.
Okay. Matt abstains. One abstain. Three yeses. Okay. Correspondence, Howard?
The only one of note is number four, it's the summary report for turning week and we can bring that up later on under all business.
Okay. Vouchers?
We have one voucher tonight. That voucher is for a hydrant flag at Harmony Lane. If you recall, Harmony Lane was accepted at annual town meeting 2014. The year has passed and I had asked Peter Durkey, the Highway Surveyor, to do a final look at it to make sure everything's fine before we release all the remaining withheld bond funds. And he said the only thing missing is a hydrant flag. So here it is for $20.89. And this will come out of that remaining money that was held in reserve for the year.
Make a motion to approve the voucher to Everett Prescott for the hydrant flag in the amount of $20.89.
Second, Madam Chairman.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we paperwork with that out?
Oh, cool.
While we're on the topic of Harmony Lane, should, would you entertain a motion for an M account release?
There's two M accounts to be released relating to Harmony Lane. One is for the escrow account for peer review and the other was the performance bond. The performance bond is M account 26493 in the amount of $969.16. And escrow account is 26485 in the amount of $1,001.2. The performance bond release already reflects the number that already considers the $20.
The $20, 98?
Yeah.
That's already been removed?
Yeah.
Do you mind, Howard? Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to release escrow funds for the account M26493 in the amount of $969.16. And also to release the escrow account for M account M26485 in the amount of $1,001.2.
Second? Discussion? Ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just quickly, since we're taking care of all the administrative?
Whoa, whoa, wrong, wrong. Paper's wrong. I'm not the vice chairman, Tilly is.
What's the air?
It lists me as the vice chair, I'm not. You are.
The old form, no.
Yeah, the old form.
Well, you voted and approved it, I'll just have it.
We can sign it at any point, yes. It's ministry.
It won't take any scratch outs, huh?
Do you want that, Howard?
Yeah, we can scratch it out, but at the next meeting it's.
Figure it all out.
Since we're in planning office, the Form H request for extension of time, we need to sign this at tonight's meeting, is the concept development plans for Bailey Lane at tonight's meeting to approve the applicant's request for extension of time, it's the Form H.
Oh, because we're coming on September?
It's gonna be 90 days between this meeting and the next.
Have you heard from them at all?
They're still doing test picks, but they hopefully will be ready for, at the next meeting.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to extend the time for decision for the Bailey Lane OSRD to December 31st?
They signed it September 30th.
September 30th?
One month?
Yeah.
We do quarters.
Yeah.
So it's September, September 30th?
Yep.
Interesting.
It's, this is for the concept, this is the preliminary to it, it's not the definitive.
I think second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The court signs it.
There you go, Bob.
Get in there, champ.
She's like, soon, I know soon. Yes, we'll find our military.
Pay attention, Matt.
It's coming, Matt, it's coming.
All right, are we ready for the public hearing now? Do we do all our?
May I request that at our next meeting? Bring your stamp or whatever you need.
Yeah, that's always signed by the court, extension of time, it's not a military requirement.
Yeah, I'll start bringing it, that's easy.
You never know.
Madam Chairman, if you'll hear it, I would motion to reopen the continuation of the hearing for the site plan approval of Noonan's at 269 Central Street, continued from July 8th.
Second?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
And the board.
All right.
For the record, my name is Scott Cameron with the Morgan Cameron Group, I'm a project civil engineer for the site plan application before you. Here with me tonight are the Flynn's, Steven, Steve of Noonan's, and this is for the site improvements related to the miniature golf course cafe as part of their agritourism project. I do have a brief update for you. I believe, Howard, you've been giving them progress reports as we've been working through.
The information you've been giving to me, I've been giving to you.
Yep, so we last met back in April, it's been a while. We've been working through concurrent application before the Conservation Commission and their consultant, as well as working with Peter Durkey at the Highway Department on some of the stormwater related aspects, also working with your consultant, Graham Associates, getting through his comments, which we believe at this point are mainly satisfied. I have for you, so we met with the Conservation Commission last Thursday, obviously that was after the deadline to submit new plans to you, I wanted to make sure the commission didn't have any remaining comments, in case they did, we could incorporate them into the plans. So having none, they kind of gave it, they deferred the matter to your board and I wanted to make sure you were all set before they closed out, or they would expect to close out at their September 17th meeting. So I did bring with me tonight the latest and greatest plans, which addressed the last couple of comments from Graham's letter. The Conservation Commission did not have any other comments, so they were, they were set with the application and I can distribute those to you if you, if you'd like.
Did you bring any minutes from the Conservation Board or a statement to verify what you're stating?
It's, it's all, the minutes aren't printed up yet, but they, we, they didn't want to close the hearing, we didn't want to close the hearing unless we were set with both boards, so the, the goal would be, I know you're down a member this evening and we were hoping to distribute the plans with you tonight, come back, I believe the ninth is your next meeting, and when you have the full board, and we believe that the technical components of this are just about, they're there, there's only a couple of minor stormwater, you know, note cleanup stuff, and we want to talk to you about some of the other matters from his last, last letter at the next meeting.
August 13th?
Okay.
Yes.
August 13th?
Yep, yep, so this is in response to that letter and give you a chance obviously to review it between now and the next meeting. And we thought maybe it might be prudent to have Jerry, Jerry come from Graham's office to the next meeting so we can be efficient and maybe come to a resolution at that meeting. We're, we're ready to go, the Concom would be on the 17th, and from a technical perspective, we seem to be there, you know, and I just want to make sure if we have any other lingering questions, we can take care of that at the next meeting.
Madam, just to clarify, we're talking about Larry Graham, have Larry come on?
Yep, yep.
Jerry in Larry Graham's office did the review, so he's the one to be expected to come.
Oh, okay, I'm not familiar with Jerry, I've never met him.
I've been talking to him on the phone, you've been coordinating.
Yeah, yep.
He's been there for about 11 years.
The guy behind the scenes.
Yeah, really in the background.
Yeah.
I just, I just, Howard, do you think you could follow that up on the conservation to verify?
Yeah, I can get an email or something.
That would be great.
Can we see their decision?
Sure, but they haven't made one yet.
They haven't issued.
They haven't made one. And they deferred, you know, we were going back and forth, mainly the wetlands and the Conservation Commission regulations as they pertain to the buffer zone work. We received the sign off from their consultant on those aspects and they, they actually deferred the stormwater piece of it to your board because your consultant's doing the stormwater review.
Yeah.
So that was, they wanted to make sure everything was set on your end and assuming that's all set, they're gonna, they're gonna sign, you know, I would expect that they, they moved to close the hearing and approve it on the 17th.
We're trying to improve in communication between boards, so we want something in email or writing or something to confirm.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
September 9th, the Bailey Lane OSRD public hearing is continued. So do you want to do Noonan's on the 9th or the 25th?
What's on the 25th?
25th would be better, I think.
We would very much appreciate your, your time on the 9th, only because Concom meeting is on the 17th and if we miss that, we're off another month. And the contractor has been waiting, he's in the area and they're ready to go in October, if we miss this, we miss a year, they can't do it again until next year, so we would very much appreciate it if you're able to, to meet on the 9th, that would be.
For myself, I'm one board member, I wouldn't make a decision until I saw what the contractor, as I say. So that, if that's the 17th, and then we have one the 9th, so we're gonna have a meeting prior to their decision.
That would be the idea, yeah. But I think what he's saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Concom is basically waiting for us. They're waiting for you. So somebody's gotta, somebody's gotta act first.
And of course, neither one of those boards would condition their decision upon another board's decision.
Right.
Ever, we would never do that.
That's right.
Right.
And they're not saying that, but.
What we're basically doing here is we're trying to both establish that this is a final cut of the plan.
Here's a plan, we want both boards to approve this plan and not have one approve it, you make changes, and then we gotta reopen that hearing, it's just, we, we got, we have to coordinate with both, so.
Yeah.
They, they gave us the straw endorsement to, to go forward and get everything squared with you, and then our hope would be to come back on the 17th with, with the Conservation Commission.
I guess the question is if there's any information that the Concom could give us, just informational, not, not instructional.
Right.
But you know, I don't know.
What do you mean by informational?
Well. Impact to wetlands. Any, wouldn't they have, you know, drainage rates and, because I know that there's a lot of wetlands back there. Would it be helpful, that's all I'm asking, I mean, maybe not, I don't know.
All the stormwater is being handled with the Planning Board.
By the Planning Board.
Yeah.
And they've reviewed the wetland impacts with respect to the Wetlands Protection Act on their own, they've, we've hired a consultant, BSC Group.
Okay.
To do that review, we're through it, they're, they're good with the wetland line, they're good with the wetland regulation piece, all that, that's all memorialized, the consultant, that's all on, on record with the Concom.
Yeah, so that, the only thing they probably could write would be what BSC said.
They're gonna say what I'm saying is, we need.
I'm sure they are, but we need this, we need this in print. I need that, how about the board members?
I think what the, what the Concom is probably looking for is a, a set of final plans.
Yes.
That they have confidence.
They're not gonna get changed by the Planning Board.
They're not gonna get changed by the Planning Board, so that when they close and they issue their decision.
They can report.
They, we wouldn't then again change the plan, which would force the applicant to go back to Concom, reopen, start the whole process.
And I'd be happy to bring that, I'm sure we can get an email from Steven for the meeting on the 9th, so you have it, but for your, for your records, but I mean.
It also works vice versa, if they change anything.
They're, they're not changing anything at this point, that, they told us that at the meeting.
Could I ask a question? These plans that you're bringing us tonight, we're not even gonna look at them until, you know, because they didn't come in, in time. To the best of your knowledge, does it address everything in Larry Graham's, what was it?
It's addressed everything we can possibly address.
Does it address everything in Larry Graham's letter?
Everything in his letter with the, the exception of the 61A piece, Howard, I think you were talking, you're, and you're working on that.
Right, after this discussion, we can, we can talk about agricultural exemption, what needs to be done with that.
Every other.
But that's not relative to Larry Graham, that's relative to the board.
Right, and every other technical item is addressed here.
Every technical item that has to do with site plan?
Yes, that's right here.
Which is 61, in my opinion, does not deal with site plan, everything with site plan.
I would agree with that. So.
Okay.
I have no objection, if, you know, if there's, if it's feasible in the, on our schedule, then I, I would have no objection to doing it.
Do it on the 9th?
September 9th?
Okay.
Madam Chairman? No objection.
No.
If there's no more discussion.
One, one more item is, I think what the board needs to do is, is get their final determination done on the whole agricultural exemption part of this application. And I think Scott, you were gonna talk just briefly tonight about that, or?
Well, Attorney, Attorney De Luna's handling that matter, and this is, this is outside of kind of the site plan arena, it's really the attorney thing, and I don't know what, what the board would need for confidence. We, we had submitted on our last submission, our response, we cited, I know Attorney De Luna signed a case law, which was this exact same application in another community where, where it was ruled to be, be acceptable, and.
Does the board have concerns over the application relative to agricultural exemption?
I don't have on the 61 because like you're stating, that's the assessor's decision, but I do on the exception, number three of the 40A, that, you know, I, I really think.
That's a part of the matter.
That's right.
But I, I believe, at least from my perspective, that has been, that question's been asked and answered by the ZBA. And I don't actually feel as though this board has the authority and wouldn't want to go there, I mean, it's already been handled in the special permit from the ZBA. This is site, this is not special permit, this is a site plan review, if I'm not mistaken, this is not a special permit. The ZBA has said it's a cafe and they're recognizing that it's a cafe and it can be there, we know that, they set the hours, they conditioned hours of its operation.
Did you see the decision? Was, the last one that was attached was the continuation to their decision.
The decision was in there as well.
Is that in the first section of the packet that you sent?
It was in the packet we submitted prior to this one, so it was, we had the, the permit and then the continuation, which they approved.
Oh, I was looking for that.
They talk about hours of operation, so they certainly didn't overlook that as a topic.
Well, my question is, is the restaurant? What I saw for the continuation was they only addressed the golf course, and yeah, there would be hours to that, but I didn't see anything about the restaurant.
No, it was cafe hours.
It was on there, and it was all, the same application that you're reviewing was presented to the zoning board of appeals, and that, it, it was the same application, the cafe, the miniature golf.
It's attached in here, right? They gave it to us?
As an attorney, you might have a, a better opinion, but what you're saying, Harry, makes a lot of sense in terms of it not really falling under our.
It's not our Bailey way.
Exactly, no.
They've made that decision. And the ZBA has said that use is allowed under these conditions.
Why would we want to reopen that, why would we want to reopen a decision that's made?
Was that in last?
Well, that was in Larry's report, too.
The last time Noonan's was here is in the packet, right, you provided it at the last submission.
Yes, not the last, not the last meeting, but the last time they were.
The last submission, it was in, no, 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 that was the original application, we
submitted a, an interim set in July, to July 20th was the date of that.
July 20th, okay.
I likely have it in my car.
Yeah, I would like to see it, because the, all I saw in this packet was a continuation.
I'm pulling back on the ZBA decision.
Right.
Allowed it, I think that was in May, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, you're right.
If we're ahead in that, we decide to reopen.
How a place isn't to say.
As long as they have addressed it.
Yeah, they, well, they, they stated quite clearly the hours of operation, not only the, the golf course, but also for the cafe.
Well, you've got a better memory than I do, I don't remember that.
I do.
So I can follow up and just provide that to the board?
That's good.
Okay, and that will be the extent that I will do. I'll just get the, the ZBA decision and forward it on to the board.
Thank you.
Sure.
So you all have an understanding of where it was with the agricultural exemption?
Right, right.
Just on the second page.
Okay.
And I just, just to clarify, I want to make sure that, that we have that for the meeting on the 9th, if that, we have consensus that, that that's a ZBA matter and we, we, at this point, don't need to follow up any, anymore on that? Okay.
That's my understanding, too.
Yeah.
It's my take on it.
I wonder why Larry didn't, 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 did he, did he get the copy maybe of the ZBA decision? Because he wrote it up on this, on this report.
Yeah, well, he deferred, again, he deferred to the.
First time he wrote it up.
To the zoning and the, you know, the 61A people on that, it's not really a site plan matter.
Do we need to vote on disregard or on the whole agribusiness? So.
It'll be part of the decision, but.
So we're gonna.
If it's a matter that the board wants to address in any way, I'm just saying it could be in the decision.
I believe the only reason it's brought up is because of Larry's comments.
Oh, yeah, I think you're right.
I don't think any of the board members ever mentioned it, to my knowledge.
Right.
So we can continue to the 9th?
Yeah.
I'd like to so move.
Second.
Wait, who, who made the motion?
I did. I would like to make that motion, that we continue.
Public hearing?
The public hearing for Noonan's, for site approval of Noonan's project at 269 Central Street until September 9th.
At 7 o'clock.
At 7 o'clock.
For discussion? Just a question, date of decision, was needed an extension? We're at the end of the quarter, yeah. Do we need an extension for the date of decision?
I think you, you filled it out till the end of the year.
Yeah, Attorney De Luna is handling this application, I'll double check that, if, if we need to get you something, I'll make sure that letter gets sent.
Yeah, I don't think he signed it to September, I think he signed it later.
Till later, yeah.
I'll double check.
Yeah, okay. Question for, clarification for this, he has these plans here, which I understand we can't review for today, but could we take them so that we can review them in advance?
Yeah, he'll pass them on.
God, I hope we do.
We do, too. Looking forward to getting this thing wrapped up, so.
Before we continue, how, how greatly different are they from what I have here?
To be honest with you, the, the changes, good luck finding them, they're very, they're very minor changes, we've added some sidewalks in to improve pedestrian access, outside of that, there are minor note changes, there were no major changes to the site plan, these were, you know, and if you review his.
Put a dumpster in there?
The dumpster was on the prior submittal, actually.
Oh, wasn't it?
Yes, it was, it was in the, the back right corner of the property where they keep all their other kind of waste, you know, the, the compost area, and that's kind of where all that stuff is located.
Where the old ice cream place is doing?
Behind that, further out back, yeah. Yep, so that's where the, the dumpster for the cafe will be situated.
One set of plans was bigger than the other and showed more area, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I think the site plan, yeah, it was on the sheet C2, I believe. So you're gonna leave those for us? I will, I will leave that for you. I don't know who wants to accept them.
Pass them to Howard and he'll. Excuse me?
But we have yet to vote.
Full size or half size?
I have two, two-fold and four-half, and then the cover letter.
And Madam Chairman, I request you call the vote. Are we in still discussion?
I'm just curious, what, what, when did this all start? When was the original submission?
I believe we were here in April.
April. So in July, we probably would have gone for an extension?
I believe that was covered in one of the continuance letters.
They did an extension to September 30th.
Ah, okay.
In June.
Good. Madam, Madam Chairman, we'll call the justice.
Ready to vote? Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Call the vote.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you on the 9th.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Before we let them leave, are there any other questions that we might have that we might want to have in advance of the 9th?
Too late, we continue.
We continue this.
Send it to Howard and Howard. I just don't want to have to have him come back.
Well, I could, don't continue.
Appreciate your diligence.
I really want the mini golf place for my son for next year, so.
I want the drainage cleaned up. Ask the ZBA.
Yeah, yeah.
It's written in the bylaws, I don't have a copy.
Okay, what's next?
It's not our place to answer that question.
All right, no, there's no new business.
It's not our, our place.
Old business, the parking wreck?
Yeah, what, what's the story with parking wreck? Weren't they coming back or something?
Yeah, we haven't received anything. But they're gonna be coming back with revised plans that the board discussed, right?
Oh, they're probably meeting right now, aren't they?
They should be.
Oh, their, their meeting's probably just starting or something right now, wow.
I had my thoughts on that parking wreck, I'd like to talk about it. Because of the history we've had with that East Main Street development, I think that perhaps the pastor or someone representing the parish, the parishioners should attend the meeting to make sure that they will be pleased with whatever we decide on. And I, and that's been bothering me because, and the only reason I do this is that from the last time, we were going to do a sidewalk on the side and cut all the trees by United Foam, and we had all the plans and they had the plans and we kept. And we had all the plans and they had the plans and we kept stalling and stalling, trying to get this done from, uh, month to month, ext- extending continuations. And, um, didn't happen. And then the last minute, the parishioners didn't want it. So they had to redo their, all their plans and that was very costly and time-consuming.
You know, it, it is funny. I, I don't usually drive out of town that way. I usually go, go from, to the west. But I did notice, they really took quite a bite out of it, that slope.
Yeah.
That might be a pro, I mean, that's a...
Only has to rain a couple more times, it...
I hope not.
It'll all go away.
Well, when parking wreck, um, comes back with, with some documentation, I'll certainly extend an invitation to the church.
Great, yeah.
Can I just ask, is that more than what we'd normally do for a butters?
No, uh, with this particular one, I notified United Foam. I think it's no more than right that we represent the town and the residents and that includes the businesses and the churches. So they should be in on it.
Basically, sure.
I guess the, the heart of my question is, we're not extending them special privileges because they're a church.
No.
We would do this for a business or somebody else that would, in that same position.
Right.
Well, they're granted right away and they, they granted a lot of, of...
They've been very good as far as we can determine.
They sold their land. And we granted them right away.
Yeah.
Which then?
Yeah.
The church. That driveway is town-owned land now, purchased with CPC funds.
Right.
And we granted them a perpetual lease and repass and repass.
Yeah, but they are part of our town.
Absolutely.
And I don't mind granting them any courtesy would grant anybody else.
Yeah.
But I don't think that we'd go above and beyond that either.
Keep, keep in mind that from the vote at the last meeting, it sounds like this is gonna turn into a public hearing. So they will be notified along with every other abutter to a butter, special permit, right?
Mm-hmm.
Every abutter to a butter of the entire parcel. If we don't determine this to be a minor modification. The whole thing starts all over again.
Boy, I'll tell you, having driven by it, my opinion is modified from what it was with the last one.
Well, I, I feel comfortable being proactive instead of reactive.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, like I said, with this particular project, it's cost the town a lot of money, it's cost us a lot of time, it cost Howard a lot of time. The previous planer, it took time. It took Larry Graham time. I mean, you know, it's unnecessary. If, in fact, we find out, hey, they don't want it and they're not gonna approve it and, you know, I, I don't wanna snub their nose, snub our noses at them because they don't own the road anymore. That's not what we're all about.
No, no, I don't think, uh, if, I'm not gonna speak for Robert, he wouldn't, we talked about it, talked about ways that that slope could be managed so they wouldn't have to mow it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't wanna mow it right now with the way that is.
No.
Right, and, uh...
It's like a ledge now.
Yeah, exactly.
Once we get the drawings and the alternatives and we're a much better understanding of how much they're deviating from what was approved.
Yeah.
And if it's still there when we get them all?
Can we, can we respectfully request that, um, they come to, you know, come, come to the meeting, or, you know, attend?
Will we go downstairs and ask them to come?
I just put it on the agenda, cause I wasn't sure if they're gonna show up.
No, I, I, I understand, but I mean...
Information was gonna come in on Thursday or not, but...
You know, I think Tilly's point is well-taken about that this is the town. This is our, this is our thing here.
Yeah.
Shuck goes on north.
Yeah.
I included in, uh, under old business, the latest from BSC Group on a construction update. And provided on correspondence was the summary report that the board had requested. And, uh, that summary report is by the quarter.
Yeah, it's quite involved.
And then Little's Hill Planning Board comments on the draft report. Has everybody read the draft report that I prepared?
Yes, I did read that. I had a couple of things. Have you made any update, research? The last payment for the affordable housing.
Oh, that's done.
But you didn't have it on the report.
It was in the report. That's been satisfied.
Well, you, you gave us a printout of the financial state. And there was, that was the balance remaining, was that one payment.
All the payments have been received at the trust required.
Well, then that should've been updated, I think.
I remember it, it said that in the narrative.
In the narrative, but the printout didn't.
I didn't, I didn't go that, I didn't remember.
Tilly, uh, the, the trust requirements been satisfied.
Cool.
It, it took me six months of research.
I know, it was...
And I found, and I got letters from all the attorneys and the money started coming in to the town before the trust was established. It was in different accounts that got transferred and they're all reflected on the balance sheet. But the last one was, I got was a HUD statement that stated that it was made and then I corresponded that to an intake from the planning board. And it, it's, it's fine.
I, I just thought you would've given us a follow-up of another...
It's in the report. It's been satisfied.
Yeah, well, that's...
What, what, what financial statement are you referring to?
There was a sheet there and I, and I kinda thought, well, gee, Andrea was busy because it was a whole printout. I don't know if it's in this packet. No, the last packet, the last month's.
Would've been a separate packet.
Did you see it too? The one sheet you had with all of this, every payment was, was itemized and listed, the date and whatnot. It was a, a total, you know, like she zipped it right off the computer of her balance sheet.
Well, I did that and that, that does map and lot for each lot, what the E, EAU was and the date it was received and everything else, right?
Right.
I can provide you with that, that's not a...
Just the, just the last one and that, that would clean it up.
Okay.
All right, uh, thank you. But everything else, is there anything else that Little Hills needed? Did you get a chance to read that?
Are you ready to discuss tonight, the report, or do you wanna...
Well, there was, there was still a number of issues that needed to be...
Discussed with the board, right?
Uh, well, um, I thought we needed updates on some of them.
Then let me know what you, what you're thinking where the updates were.
Okay.
Boundary markers, I think was another big one, for the conservation land.
No, the signs are up, but the boundary markers for each lot. And I was deferring that to the planning board, if you were gonna require that or not, because...
Howard, may I, when, when, when you put "to be determined"?
Yeah.
You meant by this board.
For discussion with the planning board.
Yeah, oh, I thought, I, I misunderstood that to mean that there was more information coming.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, it wasn't clear.
My apologies.
But what I gathered from all these things and those outstanding items, I just need to get a feel from the board of, of, yes, we want this, or we believe by this time that they would've been done and things like that, so...
I know how mu, I, I can only imagine how much work that was to put that all together. Is there any easy way to pull out the "to be determined"?
Yeah, that's fine. I can pull out all the "to be determined" and...
Pull that out for us?
Codify it and just make a list.
Band sheet for, um, the next meeting?
Yeah.
If you could do that without going crazy.
No, it's easy.
That would, uh, that would knock that very, very thick packet probably down about...
Page.
Five pages. Well, five pages with explanations, so that we can really dig our teeth into it.
Okay.
Can I ask you to, um, just, the, one of the most important things from, from this was, um, the homeowners association, they had a couple of open items, didn't they?
They, they had some concerns, yeah. The biggest one being that some of the houses can't transfer a clean title because the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission hasn't been satisfied.
Ah, okay.
So, uh, and, and for Concom, they need as-built plans.
That's not our bailiwick, no.
No.
And...
But it becomes...
Would we want to withhold, yes, would we, would we want to withhold funds on behalf of another board to...
Well, you can withhold the funds because the agreements state that all other permitting agencies need to be satisfied.
Satisfied, so they still wouldn't be able to get their form, have their, or whatever it is, J, sign off, right?
That might be so...
Concom has issued what their outstanding items are.
Oh, they did.
Can we release, before we have a full form J filled out and signed off by all the boards?
You have been, you've been doing partial releases all along.
Okay. No, I mean, can we do a total release? At that point, we are allowed to.
If you release all the funds and something comes up, the developers, gone, and now it's on the towns.
Right. So it would behoove us before we released our final release of surety, to make sure that that whole form...
All your conditions, all your permits.
Form J.
Form J.
Which would include Concom sign-off, Philly inspectors sign-off, all those sign-offs would all be incorporated into that form J. But all those signatures are there. The only blank one should be ours, the clerk's.
Break the stamp.
And then we'd release, right? That would behoove the town that way.
Right.
Thank you.
So, so, so did we have, uh, the, um, inspector go through, um, Varga, I guess? Um, that all of the retentions are cleaned and who?
That's in his report. Yeah, he did that last fall.
Okay. I, I just wondered if that, says, I saw the, I saw the price on, um, one of the, you, one of your printouts. And it was the forty, forty thousand dollars to clean, clean out a retention? Did you really?
No, I don't remember that. It, it, there may have been cleaning out retention ponds and things like that in the past, but... One, one of the problems that happened was that the, uh, it was turned over to the HOA when the homes were still being constructed. And the, the builders, uh, were not properly protecting the stormwater inlets. And so there's a lot of celtation that's happened over the last four or five years since the, uh, master deed's been turned over. So there's a little bit of finger pointing about, going on about who's responsible for that.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody's getting an assessment.
What's that?
Somebody's getting an assessment.
Well, we're...
HOA meant to, it, it, once it becomes the HOA, they're meant to be cleaning it up, but the developer was part of the HOA when this was going on, so...
So is that going to, maybe that's something we should make note on our subdivision regs, you know, when we make decisions. Because this is a private road, so nobody is really responsible for the, the town that is, is responsible after that. So if they don't clean out those retentions, it's not our...
It's the homeowners association.
That's right, and, and...
As is the surge treatment plan. How's that doing? Or, or is that really not our bailiwick?
Well, I'll tell you...
It's the HOAs, no?
It's the HOAs. And if they had a concern about it, they would've mentioned it, yeah?
It's sort of an interesting experiment for the town.
Right. Because that's on, on a hill and, and the abutting property is Central Street Town Hall. CVS, it's all coming this way. And they got a retention right at the bottom of their development, huge.
And it has not been maintained.
And it hasn't been maintained. That's not good.
It's an organizational issue. It sounds like the homeowners association needs to up its game.
And one of the problems with that is that the master deed was recorded, but I haven't seen any documentation that's, that, from the developer saying, I've done all this, it's yours now. So when the master deed got filed, I don't have any proof that, well, the retention basins, they're all clean, they've all been maintained. All the inlet drains have been cleaned.
Right.
Like, I've done everything I was meant to do and now it's yours. There isn't anything. There's just the recording of this master deed. So there isn't anything to establish what it was before it was turned over. All it is is what it is now.
But d- does the master deed say something defective that's your problem now, though? Like, it, it, you know, we're releasing, uh, as-is, uh, uh, where is and, you know, it's, it's the homeowners association's problem now. I wouldn't be surprised if that's included in that master deed.
It's forty pages and it's probably in there somewhere and...
And, and those, those poor homeowners, they're gonna get this huge assessment form from, uh, from the homeowners association. Who else is gonna take care of it?
And then I also, uh, as I recall, the master deed was recorded. I didn't see anything that shows the HOA saying, yes, we're ready to accept it. It was just recorded by the developer. So I, I don't see anything that truly shows the transfer of conditions and, and we're ready to take it over. And there's questions that go on about the...
Charter of the homeowners association is robust.
Yeah.
But they have...
But we can't get into that too much.
No, I just, I, I hate to think.
Would that be a, a, a question that we, we wanna ask the homeowners association about?
I did ask them.
Okay.
And their response was the letter. I said, you gotta meet and you gotta issue your concerns to me of Little's Hill.
And that letter that was that one letter that I saw in that packet?
Yeah, single page, signed by the HOA.
Okay, okay. And that's the sum total of their concerns?
Right. I, I did ask the question, so... But I'll have "to be determined" all the outstanding items for the board to discuss. I need guidance from the board on, at the next meeting. We can either make that the ninth or the twenty-sixth.
Nice job, um, giving us the information about the, the forty R.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you printed it out. You've been reading it?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, of course you were.
I picked it up ten minutes ago.
No, there's a lot to it.
I was doing some curls with it.
Lot to it.
Lots to start on. And I met with the Economic Development Committee this past Tuesday morning. And they're ready to start investigating this and helping the board and advising the board on, on everything, so... I think they're gonna be...
Is that a doc, is that a, is that a file that you can modify?
Yeah.
That's a modifiable file?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I hope so.
What I'm hoping, what I'm hoping, yeah.
It is.
What, what I'm hoping is that, um, we could get some kind of summary of this or a roadmap or some, one of the, one of the challenges.
Executive summary somewhere.
Start.
That's a, that's a state requirement, everything, a packet for the forty R.
And, and that's marvelous, but...
It's, um...
Yeah, we are, yeah.
It's an application and, and...
Right, and it's...
What we have to think about is that that was an application for...
I think Tilly's saying this is the summary, right?
Sadly.
To quote a line from Alien.
Just kill me.
But there's, there's not much we could do with it. In other words, that's, that's been filled out, completed.
Right, but interestingly enough, that's for an overlay district that's this big.
And the overlay district that I think we would wanna look at would incorporate more of the town.
Why?
Those charts would change.
Why? If it, they wouldn't approve, the town wouldn't go for this. What makes you think they're going for this?
Greater public good rating, seriously.
Yeah.
The, the, the only reason to do this is greater public good for the community, in my, in my opinion. And if it's too restrictive, if it's too small, the impact's too small.
If it's too small, we're not gonna get a grant. We're not gonna get any money out of it. And if, if it's, if it's chump change, why should we?
What's the point, yeah?
And when was that prepared?
Nine.
Two years, through three years?
Oh, nine?
Oh, nine, March sixteenth and ninth.
Five, six years.
Five, six years.
Growth may have changed.
Absolutely.
Do you wanna check that out to see if there's any update or any money available? Because I, I think they ran out.
Money's available. No, they didn't. I checked.
How much is there for communities?
It's funded, it's funded now. It did run out, right after that, a year after it went down. It was all gone, but now it's refunded. I asked that on map planners. I asked the question.
Yeah, it's time to roll in that case. I mean, absolutely.
Yeah, it's back and...
Yeah, time to go.
So...
I mean...
Maybe, maybe the, the baby step here is, is Howard taking a good, long, hard look at the maps and drawing an outline of what you think would be the ideal district.
Yeah, uh, and I've started that. We, we, I have a student intern this summer from the high school. He needed to do ten hours of community service. And, uh, we've been walking around downtown and doing a, a inventory. He's looked at that. And, uh, he wants to continue his internship through the year on Wednesdays. It's for about an hour. So, um, we've already started it and, and we can start working on some maps and everything for, for thought. But what I'd like to do is if we're gonna start diving into that, if we should start a, a public hearing process on it. Pick a date to open it up and start discussing it and inviting comments.
Can I just ask one question first? The last time I went down it, from what I understand, it went down by a handful.
A handful.
Mm-hmm.
But the big issue, uh, at the time, 'cause I was working on it too with Nick, is, is the septic, that's the, the sewer's set up. That's the whole issue that, that tied us up and it got to be.
The underlying.
That's, yeah, it, it just, people, people didn't go, especially those downtown who have had serious issues, serious problems. So, you know, to extend it out, like, uh.
But for two votes, five votes, I mean, that's. You know.
A letter to the editor might have made.
Voting changes would've required a two-thirds, it's not like it was a fifty-two to fifty.
Right.
It's a two-thirds majority need to, to pass its own.
I, I mean, that's somebody catching the flu, you know, that's, that's, that's not a, a mandate, that's. So, I, 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 I tend to agree with you, let's, let's.
We did it, we did it.
One of the planning board members asked me the next day, so how did the vote go?
We did a survey to, to, to key in onto the area, the district. And, uh, everybody was interested in the sewage. But when it got to, you know, what does it, what's it gonna cost, who was gonna be in on it, you know?
What's it gonna cost me to put sewers downtown?
Theirs, their pocketbook.
Right, and if there's sewer downtown and there's more tax revenue being generated in downtown, how's that gonna affect the taxes on people that live outside of the area?
Mm-hmm, that don't get the benefit.
Well.
They do get the benefit.
Well, the people who live outside.
They get a greater tax base.
Right. I, I think the answer, the, 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 the overlying, overlaying question here is, do we wanna live in a town that's this big forever? I mean, and, and if we don't do something like this, if you don't do something with, with, with the sewer, it's, this is, you know, you're growing the margins, but that's, that's it, this is the town, and.
The center of the town is basically.
Maybe that's what everyone is comfortable with, but, you know, but for two people, I don't think that was what they were comfortable with the last time.
So what would you like for, from the planning office for, for the next meeting? Just to pull out of there things that need, the board needs to consider for updating?
Well, do we, do we wanna start a public hearing?
No, I'm not, absolutely not, I told you that before, I will not support that process because if.
You expect us to update this report outside of a public hearing?
Yeah, I do, I think that it should be done with yourself and, and you gotta help now with the student. Uh, come, you know, little by little at the, at the business meeting. We, we have already wasted money on legal ads for hearings that could come to nothing. We couldn't present it to the town meeting. And we're limited on a six-month, I think it is, isn't it? Six months prior to a town meeting.
We have to close the hearing within six months prior.
Yeah, there is a limit on it.
You can open it and have it running for years.
Right, but that's, I'm not supportive of that, how's the, how's the other people? Uh, Bob or?
Well, my.
I think it would benefit in terms of transparency of this board to activate that way.
Absolutely.
Considering how contentious this was the last time.
And, um, I, I, just in general, I think we wanna encourage a transparent approach. And, and bring people's, give people a chance to let us know what, what they're thinking, new ideas and whatnot. And whatnot.
Just to put as, uh, uh, make it as, as manageable as possible, though, to, to start out with what needs to be updated. Have that conversation and then open it up for public meeting, as we talk about what the updates are going to be, would be my recommendation.
Have a couple of cycles of review and focus and.
And, and, and just talk about, okay, well, these are the topics we need to discuss. And then once we start talking about those topics, then open it up to the public at that point, would be.
So, on the.
Do we have a philosophical difference here, or are we, are we saying that this should all be sort of packaged up with a bow and then we hold a public hearing? Or we open the public hearing and we all kick at it and work at it and?
I, I think it's that second Harry, but as I understand that, what it is is, well, here's the report from five years ago. What would require, what, is this still good and what needs to be updated? And I can tell the board that, and then when you start discussing those in detail.
It's sort of an opportunity to organize our thinking before we open it up to conversations about that page.
Yeah, I'm just gonna be drawing you a, a, a framework of this is
Right.
the items that we need to talk about.
And then we can say, talking about it, sorry.
And one of these, real, the other critical area about that is, is our water, do we have enough? Is the, is the quality gonna support? Because what this, what this is geared for is, is apartments and, and multifamily on the forty R. It's to develop, you know, a second floor, a third floor, uh, of the stores that are down there. It's, that's the, that's the, the end result of this, uh, to develop downtown. So I think the water department would be critical on where we are, can they handle it? How much more can they handle, um, and along those lines? Because with sewer, you're gonna need that water. You know, and I think that's very important, what, what they advise us at this time. You know, what are their plans? Are they gonna get another treatment plant or is it needed or should we?
Well, I, it's, there's a simple question of how much more population can our current water system handle? And I, I, I think we all know that
Yeah.
water department's gonna say not, not a lot more, and people on that side of town are gonna, you know.
So, so that was, that was the two issues, the sewage. And where, if we have land enough to put, uh, like if we needed a treatment plant down
I'm sure we're gonna think of all kinds of stuff.
Or reservoirs or something. That was, we needed an area downtown, so.
And it might be a good idea to begin thinking about addressing some of those concerns.
So should I make a motion to advertise a public hearing? Or are we not going in that direction?
I was thinking that I could take the report and say, I understand this information to still be good, the board will need to consider this information. And then notice for a public hearing.
We can talk that through and then notice. That sounds reasonable.
I think it's middle ground, right?
You, you need to update the charts and you need to update the district and the maps. And that's the update, the rest of it's all plug-in.
And then the other thing is, is, is we put.
As I say it. I, I, I read it as though I was modifying it.
No. Unless they change the application at the state.
Well, that's what I, I also need to.
Yeah, um, but we, we prioritized and we decided three amendments had to be done. Now, I thought we were gonna work on that first and then the.
Cornell numbers, this and, uh,
Yeah, so.
With all due respect, I thought that what we were doing.
Is that your schedule?
One of the three the board agreed to.
I, I thought we were.
But it was Cornell first.
No.
Yeah.
It wasn't first, it was, it was a priority. But I, I didn't think this was gonna do Cornell numbers first and then forty R, I thought there was gonna be some overlap to them all.
This is a public hearing for bylaw amendment, for zoning amendment.
Yeah.
The Cornell numbers would be a public hearing for subdivision regulations changes.
Cause they're both gonna take up.
And I was under the impression, at least I thought, I don't remember an actual motion, but I was under the impression that we were gonna have drafts of those, um, two notices tonight. But I didn't see it here, and I assume that's not ready, and, um, I don't think I really need to see a draft, I mean, I, I feel comfortable just saying to Howard, put the notices in the paper, let's begin the public hearings.
Well.
And we always.
I'd rather Rob was here to, to, you know, he should be in on this.
To delay it more?
No, to.
Now, now, Harry.
I'm sorry.
Well, what, what, what I'm proposing is that I will have updates
Okay.
to the board regarding forty R, um, with the framework of what needs to be done. And then I can notice a public hearing to start on either October eleventh or the twenty-fifth.
I think that makes the most sense personally, I don't know about anybody else.
I'm in total agreement.
Yeah.
All right.
Instead of just opening up to anybody that wants to talk about anything at all, uh, next, for the next meeting with, before we even know.
You'll have your homework done.
What's that?
You'll, by that time you'll have the homework done to read the thing.
I'll have it memorized.
It's kinda redundant.
Okay, is there any, is everybody finished?
So I'm gonna go for the Cornell numbers and, uh,
Yeah.
forty R for the next.
Yeah, I'm already talking to, uh, the planer and.
Wait, really?
The normal.
How did they do it?
I haven't spoken to him person yet, I've reached out to him and, and he left, he took up actually the whole tape on the answering machine.
I wrote a page and then I said, I think you just said, listen to it.
I gotta transcribe the answer, the phone message.
He was leaving all kinds of numbers, he was like leaving the actual data.
Oh, wow.
Oh, man.
Citations from their subdivision records.
Maybe you should take a ride over and sit down with him.
He sounded very into it.
Good, good.
Okay, that's great. Is there any more? Uh, we finished?
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Madam moderator, uh, madam, madam chair. Madam chair first.
How many moderator now?
Sorry.
Madam Tilly.
Madam Tilly. I'll make a motion, if you'll hear it, I'll make a motion to it here.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, planning board is closed.
Matt, you want half or full?
Uh, half of this. Let's take another look again.